November meeting of the Greenbrier County Republican Club. We are thankful for you all to be here tonight. We are small but a mighty group, and I do appreciate everybody coming out. We apologize for the October meetings being canceled, but a number of us were out of town, and there was another event that night that I'm sure a lot of you attended, and we appreciate you supporting those folks as well. There is an agenda on your chairs if you don't have one, or there's one to grab, so make sure you can take one if you are interested in that, and we would be happy to have you follow along with that. We know the number of people are going to be absent, I think I've mentioned that a couple of times already, but I'll talk about who they are and where they are here as we get to it, so some of our updates will be relatively brief because they're not here. With that, Prince, you ready? We're gonna do our invocation.
Lord, we lift up our faces and our hearts to you. We thank you that we've been able to come together and that we live in a free society. Lord, we pray for people in Israel, in the Middle East, the Israeli soldiers, and the Americans, and those allies who happen to be there, both prisoner and free. And, Lord, we pray for the enemy, that they might accept you, come to understand who you are, and that we would all lift our faces to you. Lord, we pray for Mr. Well, that he can have a good presentation tonight. We pray that our minds will be alert, and that we will get the benefit of being present tonight, hear the presentation, and to do our business. These things we ask in this name.
We want to base the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, clear, infinite, just as for all. Take your seats, please. All right, some time ago, we did, so now, an electronic version of the minutes from the September meeting, so it has been quite a while ago. If there are any questions, comments, or amendments to that, I'd be open to hearing that from the audience. Going once, going twice. I won't ask for a motion at this point, but I appreciate everybody taking a look at those. They do come out via email if you have time. If you're not on the distribution list, I should say, you know, let one of us know, and we can certainly add you to that, make sure it's correct. We want you to get those updates as they do come out. That said, I'm gonna talk about the people who aren't here tonight, but I will talk about Ally just for a second. She is taking care of Doug. Doug has had some emergency surgery, and so he is home trying to get well. And when she called me this afternoon, she said, "I haven't slept in four days, so I need to beg off." We certainly understand that, and please wish Doug, here, well as we get through there. I would just say, from a financial perspective, the club's in excellent shape, continues to be well. We've really had no expenses to incur. You know, we're settled up with everything, so we are in good shape going into the holiday season, and we're gonna talk about dues and a few of those things that provide income here a little bit later in the meeting, but your club is in very good financial standing, so that's a blessing for us all. So with that, I did tell Ryan that we would kind of accelerate him through the course this evening, so he could make his way back up to Parkerburg, so I'll take a minute and talk about our Senator Brian Wells from the First District, who is also our Majority Whip in the House. He's been serving in the Senate since 2016, was a delegate three years prior to that. I think what people would be pleased to know is Ryan was an Air Force officer, intelligence officer, served overseas, including in combat tour in Afghanistan, and currently in private practice in Wheeling. And Ryan has decided to throw his name in the hat for Attorney General, and there's some literature available you can pick up. So with that, I'd like you to welcome Ryan Wells to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. A prayer for my good presentation, it's a lot of pressure. Usually, you pray that I'm gonna stop my presentation quickly. Thank you very much, I'm gonna back up, so we're not like we did apart there. So, as you said, my name is Ryan Wells. I am the State Senator from the First District, so I represent pretty much the entire northern panhandle in the Senate. I serve as the Majority Whip. I'm the Chair of the Military Committee, the Vice Chair of the Judiciary Committee. I was elected in 2016 and re-elected in 2020. I did one term in the House. Okay, I love you, but one term was enough in the House of Delegates. I made the decision, I called my wife, and I said, "I don't know if I can win a Senate seat, but I'm gonna run, I'm gonna be down there." And so, I just made that decision. Fortunately, things have worked out. Prior to that, I grew up in the northern panhandle in Weirton, in Wellsburg, graduated from Brook High, graduated from Paramount State. I was in college on 9/11, it was in my fourth year, and made the decision that when I graduated, I was gonna join the military, and so I went into the Air Force. I commissioned in the Air Force in 2005. I was a reservist, but given our operations tempo, we had conflict in Afghanistan and one in Iraq, I spent pretty much the entire time on active duty between 2005 and 2011. I was an intel guy, spent most of that time in DC, assigned to one of the agencies there in the intel community, Germany, and then deployed to Afghanistan. We were a small joint Army-Air Force team in the southeastern part of the country and the border with Pakistan. While I was there, I found out, I got into law school at Duquesne in Pittsburgh, and that's when I moved back home to West Virginia. I got my start in law at the Brook County Prosecutor's Office. I was there from 2015 to 2018. Truly enjoyed criminal law, and we've talked about it many times, it's a lot more interesting than drafting a contract for somebody. I now do a lot of litigation in Wheeling, I'm on the defense side of that. I also do a lot of estate planning, so I'm kind of like the last guy that you want to have to see because you're either thinking about dying or you've been sued. The AG's office, for me, is a very important role in West Virginia on multiple different levels, and I have a great deal of respect for what the office does and what it can do. The future of West Virginia, as I see it, is gonna be fought in the corporate, because of, and you all have seen it over the past number of years, the increased regulations coming out of Washington DC. And so, to be the tip of the spear for this state is something that I consider to be the highest honor of your lawyer. I mean, think of, as a lawyer, that your clients would be the 1.8 million West Virginians, and to represent their rights and their interests in the industries here in West Virginia that employ them. And so, to be able to lead the charge on behalf of the state of West Virginia against federal overreach and ensure that we are allowed to determine our own future here in West Virginia, really is what has attracted me to this position and maybe want to make this next step, and want to do that for a state that has given me so much. The second part of why I wanted to run and how I see the office is, I'm sure you all have seen that in the past year or so, you know, our current Attorney General, Patrick Morrissey, has done a tremendous job in securing about a billion dollars in settlements against opioid manufacturers for what has been done to us here by them. That money, I think, represents West Virginia's last and best opportunity to reverse and repair the damage that we have experienced and to ensure and prevent it from ever happening again. And that money is with the West Virginia First Foundation. Your Senator, who, by the way, is our Rookie of the Year in the Senate by far, Vince Deeds by far is our Rookie of the Year, we created the West Virginia First Foundation this past session, and that foundation has the authority and oversight of spending approximately $850 million for rehabilitation, for prevention, for treatment, law enforcement purposes, educational purposes. And so, as I see it, because that represents, again, our best opportunity to move forward and to break this cycle that we have been caught in now for almost two decades, for two decades essentially, the next AG of this state is gonna have the authority to audit that foundation and to conduct performance reviews of all its expenditures. In the legislature, I focused on a couple of different things, and I went there thinking I was gonna do a lot on veterans issues, because obviously, I am, it's personal to me, it's what I know about. But as I got more and more into it, I started to realize that you really can't get into veterans issues unless you get into substance abuse, unless you get into mental health issues. So those have been the three things that I have spent a lot of time focusing on in the legislature. It's very important to me, it's personal to me. I mean, I don't think that there is a person in here that hasn't been touched by addiction in this state, because it doesn't discriminate whether by geographical location, it doesn't discriminate against demographics, economic status. I think almost every family in the state has been touched by that. So that is what spurred me to do a lot of work in those fields. So because of that, because of my background, because of what I've accomplished and worked on over the number of years in substance abuse, I think that being the next AG and having that ability to ensure that we do not squander that opportunity with the West Virginia First Foundation, that is a huge driver for me in this, to ensure that we do the right thing, not for this ourselves, but for our children and for people's grandchildren in this state. And so that is a big reason why I'm running, because to me, we could do all the tort reform, tax reform, regulatory reform that we could think of, but if we can't tell an employer who wants to expand here, or an employer that wants to relocate to West Virginia, we're gonna be able to provide you with a drug-free workforce, and I think all of the other stuff is just an academic argument. And that's how I view it, that's how I've always viewed it. You know, we've had some successes lately on the economic development forefront, but the biggest thing that, as we talked to New Core that has come to West Virginia, Form Energy that came to my neck of the woods, that was like the one thing that was their concern, that they're gonna be able to find the workforce that they need because of the opioid issue here in West Virginia. And so moving forward, that is something that we need to continue to lead on around the state and across the country, in being, thinking outside the box, how we're going to solve that crisis. So that is a big driver for me in wanting to do this position. You know, legislatively, I've been a part of the leadership since I've been there, and we have had some terrific wins, conservative agenda items that we have checked off the agenda list over the past couple of years, whether it be education choice, you know, giving parents more freedom to make decisions when it comes to their child, where they go to school, how they go to school. Tax reform, I mentioned earlier, I think you all probably know about, you know, the income tax reduction that we did this past session, you know, whether it be the prolect bills that we have done throughout the past number of years, legislation in charge of the, in respect to the Second Amendment, you know, being able to be a part of that leadership team, put that agenda together, and get those things done. You know, those were wish lists that Republicans had for years, and I'm very fortunate to come around at a time when I've been able to finally get them done. And so I'm glad to see that they have changed this state, and I think we've made improvements across the board, and they will lead to further growth. I was told that I have 30 minutes. If I ever take 30 minutes to talk, I would be disappointed in myself, so I just wanted to give you all a little bit about myself and tell you why I'm running, what the position means to me, my background. I did leave some brochures, but it is also one that opens it up for any questions. I'm here as long as you all want me to be here, as long as you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, so.
I would tell you, most of the candidates, Ryan, we bring in, we have the last of our 30 minutes.
No, I'm not a sit-in. Nobody wants to watch me for 30 minutes.
We have plenty of time, folks, if you have a question for Senator Wells, please, please ask one. Let's open the floor up.
I'd like to ask one. Since you were in intelligence in the Middle East, tell us what your views are of what's happening over there now.
So I think that what happened on October 7th is, Israel's 9/11, essentially, and finally did away, in my mind, with this false narrative that has persisted for years of this moral equivalence that has been able to persist, that Israel was doing things that allowed for Hamas to strike back at them, and they were all on the same footing. Well, Hamas showed that they are not a co-equal partner, that they are not someone to be, you know, seen as someone who is a legitimate form of governance over there. You know, there are laws to warfare, and we had to follow them every day when I was deployed, and every nation, every civilized nation tries to follow them to the best of their ability. Hamas showed on the 7th that they are not a legitimate government, they're a terrorist organization because they specifically targeted women, they specifically targeted children. I mean, you saw the horrific tragedies, beheading children, I mean, that's what we saw in Afghanistan, beheading women, kidnapping senior citizens, women and children. You know, I think that people now are kind of caught off guard by the scope of what's going on, because, you know, was it two days ago, there were rockets fired, or a rocket fired from Yemen by their, or called Al-Husayr rebels. Exactly. Who's their main sponsor? Iran. Hezbollah, who is their main sponsor? Iran. And so all of this leads back to Iran, in my mind, because what Iran was afraid of is that for the past year or so, the United States has been in a diplomatic dance to normalize, diplomatize between Saudi Arabia and Israel. And that would have also been a security agreement between Saudi Arabia and the United States. And so Iran feared that more than anything, because they view Iran, or Saudi Arabia, as their greatest threat in the region, because it's a Sunni Shia argument that's gone back thousands of years. And so, I truly believe, and there's more and more intel is coming out that kind of confirms this, that all of this was Iran's way of scuttling, doing their best to scuttle those discussions, scuttle those negotiations, and also for Hamas to ensure that the Palestinian question would have always been at the forefront, because if that, if those ties are normalized, what does that do to that discussion? Does Saudi Arabia no longer, you know, cry foul all the time on the Palestinian question? So, and where it stops, I don't know. I mean, we've seen the ground invasions, it's widened its scope, Israelis, urban combat in a small enclosed area like that is some of the worst fighting that you could imagine. And, I mean, there are estimates of upwards of 300 miles of tunnels under Gaza, that they, you know, that they can pop out, take potshots, fire a rocket at a tank, and get back down. That's why the Israelis have kind of followed the coastline, because you can't dig a tunnel out in the middle of the ocean and come out. So they've kept that as their protective flank. Time will tell. The biggest question for the Israelis is patience. How long is the world gonna be patient? You know, they went to war with Hamas in '21, not on as large of a scope. They were pressured by us and by European nations to kind of wrap those operations up, because there were civilian casualties because Hamas uses people as human shields, and obviously, they weren't able to finish the job back in '21 because of that. And so it's incumbent upon us now to try to ensure that we all maintain patience and allow for the Israelis to be able to protect themselves. I heard, as I was coming in, that the House did approve the Israeli aid package, which is, has to go over to the Senate. I'm hopeful that they will just keep it separate and allow for it to move forward, to be able to get done. Sorry, that was kind of long-winded, but it's a topic I'm very interested in.
I saw a graphic on television a day or so ago, Hamas had built 300 miles of tunnel. Unbelievable. Of course, where did they get that money? But we continue to give it to them. But I want to go to something else with the hatred of Jews that has been unmasked here in the United States, and even in Congress, the motion to censor Rashida Tlaib has failed. Where are the legalities of what can be done or should be done with respect to all of the demonstrations and the speech in Congress? I think, isn't it true, the speech in Congress cannot be sanctioned?
So you cannot be held liable for speech made in a legislative proceeding? So if I could stand up and say that I know that Vince Deeds beats old people up and steals their wallets, but if I say it on the House or the Senate floor, I can't be held liable for those in civil proceedings. With Rashida Tlaib, it's interesting, because her comments were made not on the floor, not in any sort of legislative, but they were outside at a protest. And so it's kind of interesting, because it raises a First Amendment question, that should she be punished within the legislative body, expulsion, censorship, whatever, for things that she says outside of it? And we kind of ran into that issue in the West Virginia Legislature a couple of years ago. I was a member in the House that said some interesting remarks in a media interview. Wasn't in the Capitol, wasn't on the floor, just a conversation, an interview that he had one day during the session in the evening. And so, can you take the official legislative action and sanction him for things that he said outside of that, given, you know, how does that affect his First Amendment rights? And you get into the protesters, that's a completely different issue, and it's interesting because, you know, we, what are we, what's something that we cherish here in the United States? First Amendment. And so, my, where is my right to not have to hear you and be annoyed with what you're saying, and as repugnant as I think that it is?
I'm just glad that we know who they are now.
Oh, they have made it very clear. They have made it very, very clear who they are, and it's amazing, last Friday, my wife had to speak at a conference that was held on Harvard's campus, and she was just like blown away by the protests that she saw and some of the things that were up on campus. And she said, "I just can't figure out, like, these are..." And she said, "Look, there wasn't a parole that you hear, there wasn't a whole lot of diversity on that campus, and so where did those kids come from? They all look like you and I, and they have that extreme of a viewpoint on something." And so, it's different in Europe. There are a lot of protests of being arrested in the UK because there are speech laws. They don't have the same level of freedom of speech that we do here. I mean, there are certain things that you just cannot say, certain words, phrases that you cannot say. And so while I think that it is repugnant, and it is horrible, and it is offensive, are the things that they say, the one thing that we hold very dear in this country is the right of freedom of speech and freedom of expression.
I disagree with what you say, but I'll defend the right to say it.
Yep.
Kind of to follow that, to set the stage, I'm a broken window law enforcement advocate. You prosecute the first broken window. What is your feelings? Couple of years ago, state employees, West Virginian employees, went on strike. They are not allowed to do that.
Correct. You're absolutely correct. And so, since I've been in the Senate, I've been through two teacher strikes, one in 18 and one in 19. Yeah, I mean, you were still in there. And so, it wasn't a strike though, because a strike is a union that has a collective bargaining agreement with their employer, and they go on strike. We do not have public employee unions in the state of West Virginia. The teachers in our public schools are not in a union, they are in association.
You would be the chief law enforcement officer in the state of West Virginia, other than the governor, probably more mandated to do something about that. What is your, what would you do?
So, the AG in the state of West Virginia, despite what many people are trying to say otherwise, has no prosecutorial powers whatsoever. Our Supreme Court has always been very clear that the only people who may prosecute criminals in the state of West Virginia are county prosecutors. And so, there are what the state could have, well, what the counties could have done. The counties could have and should have sought an injunction to get their employees back to work. However, when the people wearing management hats were all in agreement in favor of allowing the people who are in the labor side of the equation, run the show, they didn't do anything. Not one county did anything except say, "Well, I'm just gonna shut the schools down for five, six, seven, eight days," whatever it was back in 18. Yeah, 18, and the one in 19 was short. And so that's what should have happened. I mean, the law is very clear in the state of West Virginia. I mean, there was an AG's opinion from 19, there was a teacher's strike, I think in 1989 was the last one. And so there was, it was an opinion then discussing the fact that the teachers had no legal authority whatsoever to not go to work, because they were not in union. There was no contract that they were negotiating, they were on strike for. And so, unfortunately, the body or the agency that should have done something, the county boards of education did not.
Is all rest in one group?
The way that the case law has developed over the years, and that opinion was to kind of be the guidepost, and most of us agreed at the time that it was, that it would have been the counties would have had to have filed individual injunctions against the teachers within their county to get back to work, and none of that ever happened in any county. You are 100% correct. Yes. Fired them all. So when you talk about, I will mention this, when you talk about local politics, one thing that I have in mind is kind of a pet project, if you will, for the AG's office, is that I am the city attorney for Wellsburg where I live, and the one thing that I end up dealing with, three-fourths of the time when I spend time on doing Wellsburg work, is dilapidated properties, unsafe structures, old houses, commercial buildings in our downtown, trying to track the owners down, hold them accountable, get them in the court, get them fined, and try to get these, you know, properties tore down or remediated. If I build Wellsburg for every hour that I actually did this work, I'd be Spillman Thomas Batos, top building attorney in Wellsburg, if it broke. I mean, I only do it, it's a labor of love. I mean, I'm the city attorney, my wife is on the urban renewal authority, and so that's why we do it, because we're both from Wellsburg and we love it. Not every town has somebody, has an attorney, has the ability to get counsel, to get a lawyer, to get these people to be held accountable. How do we get these people into the court system? How do we set up a building enforcement agency, a zoning authority? And so, that's something that I would like to have in the AG's office, is an office of municipal, you know, law, maybe it's an attorney, maybe it's two, that small towns could call in and say, "Hey, if we want to set up a building enforcement agency, how do we do that? We want to set up a board of zoning appeals, how do we do that?" You know, and so, because I think that if we, you know, as a legislative body, we have approved its $30 million over the past two years for towns to be able to tear buildings down, or counties to be able to tear buildings down, but if you don't have all the legal work done, and it's a lot of legal work, if someone doesn't want to just deed the property over to the city, how are you gonna make that change? And so, it's not just, our community doesn't look that great because these properties are there, it's a law enforcement issue, because you have people that stay in these properties, that live there, that, a lot of drug activity, at least in my neck of the woods happens in these dilapidated properties that are abandoned. But it's also a safety issue for first responders. I mean, just this past year, there, I'm up there counting four firefighters across the state that have been injured in, you know, fighting a fire in one of these abandoned properties. And so that is kind of a project that I envision for that office, to be able to play that role and help smaller municipalities out across the state.
What are some of the accomplishments that you achieved in the West Virginia State Senate that you're proud of?
So, a number of things. You know, I said that I had focused a lot on mental health. You know, it's no surprise or no secret that we have a mental health issue in this state. Access to care is a big part of that, not being able to get the help that someone's looking for, whether it be telehealth or in person. So a couple of years ago, I had a bill that was mental health parity. I found out that in West Virginia, insurance companies could have a higher deductible or a higher co-pay if you wanted to see a mental health professional, or limit the number of times that you could go. And so, we don't have those restrictions on our primary care physicians, why would we do that for a mental health provider? So I brought a parity law to the state that we were able to get done and ensure that people have access to care. You know, on veterans issues, I've come up with ways to work with our Veterans Assistance, Department of Veterans Assistance, come up with ways for funding for our state Veterans Cemetery, which is just outside of Charleston, as well as our Veteran Nursing Facility that's in Barbersville, because we just, we needed to come up with ways to be able to fund those places, because we weren't doing it in the general budget, and I was getting frustrated. And so being able to ensure that we're taking care of those places was very important to me. This past session, I had a couple of pieces of legislation, all dealing with, you know, one of the big things was TikTok and banning TikTok. And so, I mean, I've, given my background, I love reading on that subject, was fascinated by it, and so, wrote a letter to Governor Justice asking for it to be banned on state systems, and a couple of agencies did. We passed some legislation out of the Senate. The House didn't take it up, but we're gonna go back at that again next year. You know, criminal law, I've done a lot on criminal law. You know, we had no way as a state to go after large-scale narcotics dealers. You know, we set our general conspiracy law that one to 10, that, yeah, conspiracies are one to 10.
Two.
Two to 10? Yeah, and so, what we did was, is we were able to get done to mirror the federal, you know, different substances, different weights, and a graduating penalty scale as well, because we didn't really have that great of a penalty open to us, you know. And Brook County, I have two states right next door, and so dealers could just... And so dealers could just move major weight into the state of West Virginia and really not fear the punishment because it wasn't that great. And so we beefed that up, and I know that on the higher river border communities, it's used a lot. And we've got more work to do on that, and we're going to get that through the House this year, Vincent's bill. And so, you know, that's, those are the things that I'm, you know, most proud of. I'm more than happy to provide everybody with a list of legislation that I've introduced and brought in myself and got through. I've been pretty successful through the years when I've said that I was going to work on an issue, getting something done for my constituents. So I feel that I have a record that I can't stand on.
Can anybody else have any questions for?
Is there any evidence of all the money that has been brought in from winning those lawsuits and applying it to these different projects to decrease drug use? Is there any evidence that it's actually working?
So, we just set up the foundation just this past session. So it's only been in existence since the legislation became effective in June, and then the board members, so there are eleven board members on that foundation. Six were elected regionally throughout the state, five were appointed by the governor, confirmed by the Senate. So it's, it is just starting out. Yeah. And then, I mean, because the settlement money came in about a year ago, is when that settlement money started. And the reason that we set up the foundation is because Oklahoma had a big tobacco settlement a couple of years ago, and the feds came back and tried to claw that back, Medicaid issues. And so that's why we created that foundation, to ensure that we avoided that altogether. And if you look in the settlement agreement that was agreed to by the parties approved by the court last fall, there are guidelines and benchmarks on how the money is to be spent, again, prevention, treatment, rehabilitation. So we don't have data right now because it's just getting stood up, but we will within the next year, I would say. I had a bill last year that we're working now on, putting together all the rules for performance-based contracting in treatment. You know, because oftentimes, what's the data? How are we awarding these contracts to people to provide prevention rehabilitation services to people with addiction issues? And we never had any to measure that by. And so last year, I had the performance-based contracting bill, that we now finally can do that and put that criteria together. So we're putting that now, and we're going to have all the data circulated.
I just have a remark. I see your picture in the middle of the pamphlet. You have three dogs.
Didn't set out to do that. We, we had two dogs, and we were happy with two dogs. We had a little one and the medium-sized guy who's on a lot of Prozac, but he's doing very well now. God bless Mur. So what happened was, is that in twenty nineteen, in the fall of twenty nineteen, my wife and I are dog people. There was talk of legislation that was going to effectively end greyhound racing in West Virginia. And so I have the track in Wheeling in my district. And so I said to my wife, I was like, look, I want to go down to the kennel, there's a kennel in Beach Bottom, which is between Wellsburg and Wheeling, where all the racers are. I said, I want to go down there, I want to see how the dogs are treated, how they live. Well, it's cool, because if we're not happy, like, I'm out then, and I can't support anything moving forward for them. And so we went down, and those dogs eat better than I do sometimes. I mean, they're, they're very well taken care of, we were happy with what we saw in the conditions and how they're treated, and what their life, you know, what their day-to-day routine is. Well, there was one dog, like, in particular, that just like followed us around the whole time. And I asked the guy, I said, well, how old were they when they retired? He said, five, six. I said, how old's this dog? He said, ah, two. Three, four years. Oh, yeah, maybe when she retired, well, a dog. So we moved into the session, and the bill went down in flames. You know, myself and others worked pretty hard against it. And so shortly thereafter, surprise, Fondo's retiring, and so we had to build a fence in our backyard. So Fondo's now Ava, and Vincent's now, and she comes to the Capitol with me, she's the best baby dog we've ever had. She goes to the Capitol with me and just hangs out in the office, and she's the Senate therapy dog. She weighs as much as baby dog, but she's three and a half feet tall. They met, baby dog and Ava met this past summer in Wellsburg. The governor's staff wanted them to meet, and they looked at each other, just walked away. They're two of the lowest energy dogs in the state. So that is why we have three dogs.
Thank you.
Can I take a minute? Appreciate Ryan coming down and spending time.
Thank you all very much. All my contact info is in my brochure.
Yeah.
My phone number, my email address, all the info right there. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Happy to answer any question you all may have. Thank you very much.
So Ryan, as we discussed earlier, you're more than welcome to stay and listen to our internal business, or if you want to make your way to Parkersburg.
I'll let you all talk amongst yourselves. I'm going to head to, I have a meeting tomorrow, so I'm headed there.
Hit the record.
So, but seriously, if you have anything, please feel free to reach out. Happy to answer.
Take your round back.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. It is, very much. Thank you.
In my haste to go through the agenda, I did forget to ask if there were any guests or new members here tonight. So if there's anybody that has not joined us before, I'd like to hear a little bit about yourself, or if you want to introduce yourself, that'd be fine. I know we see a lot of new faces out there, but I want to give everybody the opportunity to do that, if there are any guests or new members. Don't see anybody or hear anybody, so we'll move on. All right, let's talk about old business for just a couple of minutes, and start with kind of a sad remembrance, in a way. On October 2nd, we did lose Russ King. And many of us knew Russ many, many years, served this organization well, and a staunch conservative, and had a, had a kind of a difficult end. So please take some time to remember Russ and your thoughts and prayers, and please remember Marcia, who is now up on the mountain with me, kind of going through things by herself. So it's a difficult time for the King family, so please, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. That said, as Russ's services concluded, they did ask for donations to the Greenbrier Little League, Central Greenbrier Little League. And if we're interested in making a donation, I would, I would need a motion from the floor in a second, and we can certainly do that. But I, you know, traditionally, we do that kind of thing, and we don't have to do that if you don't want to, but it's up to this body to make a recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we donate fifty dollars.
Okay. All right, it's a motion fifty dollars. Anybody would like to second that?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Very good. Thank you all, I will make sure Ally gets a check to the Central Greenbrier Little League in Russ's memory, so we appreciate that. The other thing I want to make mention, and I think I've mentioned it a couple of times, is we seem to have a lot of issues this evening with attendance of our leaders. I mentioned Doug earlier, Doug and Ally are taking care of an issue at home. Dr. McKinney came down with COVID, and he's been hospitalized for five days, he just came home the other day, she's on quarantine, so she's not with them. Frank and Barbara had another obligation this evening, and they were not able to join us, I did spend some time with them this afternoon. And Fay Dunford's sister down in North Carolina is doing very, very poorly. And so it's a bit of a challenge administratively, because Fay's kind of our conduit to you all. Some of the emails and communication that we depend on to get out to you all is a little slow, because Fay is not always at her computer, and so I apologize for that, and we're going to have to think through that as this kind of continues to go on. So I'm trying to be faithful to the mechanism we set up, that she wanted to do that for us, and has done a good job with it when she's here, but she is facing a pretty significant issue with her family down in North Carolina, so please keep them in your thoughts. So we do have a number of people that are absent, and I do apologize for that, and I hope that we have them back in good health and good spirits here shortly. With that, I'm going to move to new business, and before I go to the agenda, our Senator Vince Deeds is here. I don't know, Vince, if you wanted to make a few comments to this group, so why don't we welcome Vince? And we'll get back on the floor later.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak just for a moment. Really, I'm definitely honored of your support and everything for me over the past session, past the election season. And if you can't tell, you know, I truly believe that everything is local politics and local business, you know, there's a lot of issues that affect us all, and we can see how, whether it's local or state and federal, that affects us on a daily basis. A lot of stuff coming up in this upcoming election, and it's very, very important we know how critical it is, especially on the federal level, how it is to get everybody out interested in voting and being involved in everything. So take it, please take it home with you, and if there's anything that I can do in my position, you know, please let me know what that is, call me, and we'll stop by. I work at the courthouse daily, so reach out to me, I'd be, I'd love to help you out if I could. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, we had a, an old member who's a new member of the club, and Steve Snyder has thrown his hat in the ring for the delegate race, and so Steve has joined us again in the club, and I thought he could come up and give us a little bit of an update on your campaign, and what you're doing, and why you want to be a delegate, and whatever else on your mind.
Well, thanks. Thanks for having me. First of all, I'm running for the House of Delegates seat, District forty-seven, which is essentially two nineteen west, does take in the entire town of Alderson, whether you're on Monroe Side or Greenbrier, and it essentially runs up to Greenbrier West High School, and then back across the ridge through Williamsburg and up to the Poughkeepsie County line. So if you're two nineteen west, more than likely, you are in District forty-seven. Did I ever see myself doing this? No, not really. I didn't. It took a lot of urging from a lot of folks. And when my wife said, I think you should do this, and then my son said, Dad, I really think you should do this, then that was important to me. This is the hardest thing I've ever had to do, is stand in front of any group and ask for something. I hate to ask for a vote, a favor, you know, don't even ask to lend the tools, I mean, we just don't do those things. But this isn't about politics. Frankly, I pour politics in the manner of bickering and back and forth and not being able to get along. This is about service. It's about serving the people of this region, it's about listening, it's about having the knowledge to go out there and make changes where they're needed. We don't always need change just for change's sake. You know, I don't know everybody here, and sometimes I'm really bad with names, but I'm good with faces, but just out of curiosity, how many folks in here, like, were born and raised and never really ever left, except maybe for college? Did everybody, a few, literally, here from the beginning? And how many left for a long time and then came back, grew up here, but then, so a few of those? And then how many of us are kind of considered imports? You know, it's curiosity. You know, my parents left here in nineteen sixty-one, my mom was from Hundred, West Virginia, my dad was, I'm sorry, my mom was from Mannington, and my dad was from Hundred, Wetzel, Marion County. There was no work in my dad's chosen field, he was an aviation mechanic, and that work did not exist here. So I was born in Hartford, Connecticut, darn near makes me a carpetbagger, but I'm not, because, well, then my dad went to work for Lockheed, my other brothers were born in Georgia, and then they moved halfway back to Pennsylvania, and now they reside in Valentine County, Virginia. But my whole life, I came back every chance I got, stayed with my grandparents, spent the summers there, visited them, and my life's goal was to be back here. And I'm very blessed to be a military veteran and have that retirement that keeps the wolf away from the door, so that I can come back here and raise my family the way that we want to, with some of the values that come from West Virginia. This is near and dear to my heart. Our son, Cole Morgan Snyder, the Morgans, not by accident, if you go back eight generations, it goes straight to Morgan Morgan. So our family's very sensitive about the legacy, about West Virginia. On my mom's side, there's, the Morgans and the Wests came together, and my grandfather, James Green West, great, great, was there at the Second Wheeling Convention when we penned the documents to make this estate. So, you know, while I spent my life running everywhere but here, I always wanted to be back here. And we drove around the state, all over, you know, Tucker County, Marion, Wetzel, Roan County, you name it, we were everywhere, and one year we came through here. Had always driven through Greenbrier County to come to the state fair or go to grandma's house. You know, before the interstate was finished, we had to go up and cross the mountain, there was no choice. But, you know, people ask me, they said, where are you going when you retire from the Coast Guard? I'm going to West Virginia, and they're like, why? You know, that question is kind of like asking an avid motorcycle rider, why? If you have to ask that question, you just wouldn't understand. And if people don't understand, that's okay, but there's a lot of values here. You know, you go to Tucker County in the summer, we like to go up there and camp, Cole's volunteering as a counselor at one of the summer camps. You can't get by front porch up there without somebody inviting you up to, you know, have a cookie or some iced tea or just to chat. Those are things that happen in West Virginia that don't happen other places. I've lived in places where you've got people right up against you, and they use the garage to open, or they go in the garage and you never see them. Literally, you don't know what your neighbor looks like. You know, so what does that mean to you as somebody that wants to say is Steve the right person? I think you've got to be capable, and you've got to be passionate, and you've got to be ethical. None of those work without the others. You know, capabilities without ethics, I'm sorry, that doesn't work. Passion without the knowledge to be able to how to do it, that goes a long ways, but that really doesn't work either. I've been a lot of places. I joined the Coast Guard, I wanted to serve other people. I, you know, I got recruited by the Marines and the Army, I love them all, they're fantastic services to work alongside, but I found I mentioned the Coast Guard because it was a service of service. You know, during Hurricane Katrina, when the levees broke, I was there. I was watching it all from above, guiding helicopters into the right spot. You know, as a helicopter rescue pilot in Alaska, when the alarm went off and you had to go somewhere, there was some imported business on the other end of that. This is akin to that. This is about service, this is about going somewhere to get something done when the alarm goes off. And in West Virginia, we're talking about some of the same things that we were talking about in nineteen sixty-one. Why are our young people leaving? Let's stop saying that. Let's say last year, we had a hundred thousand young people, graduates of high schools, stay here. Let's find out the reasons, well, we know the reasons. It's work, it's salary, it's quality of life. What do we need to do? We need to look at businesses. Every person in the legislature, frankly, every citizen in West Virginia should be a poster child. You know, you need to act like you work for the CBB or the Econ Development, because it's like, hey, bring your company here to West Virginia. I run into people all over the country, and I'm like, bring that business here. You know, and they say, well, why should we? Do you have a, are you workforce ready? Do you have skilled people? Well, those are the things we need to make sure that we do have. In the high schools, we need to start at the elementary levels, work through the middle schools, work through the high schools, and give these young people skills that translate. Some of them are going to go to college, some of them are going to stay on the family farm, some of them are going to be welders, tradesmen, truck drivers. You know, guess what? All the attorneys in the world, Pat, can't change their own oil. Somebody's got to do that for them. Sorry, there's more than one attorney in the room. But you understand, somebody's got to do those services, and we need skilled trades. So, you know, when we get down to the high school, and we've got those, that group of students over here looking at that sort of work, we need to embrace that, we need to make sure they are workforce-ready. I talked to the union hall about six, seven years back, and we were trying a collaborative effort, some things that were going on here in Greenbrier County with some of our union halls. There was not one single young person in the masonry trade in training at the union hall at that point in time. Look at the buildings that we built here in the twenties, brick and stone. You know, it's really sad to think that we didn't have one single mason, trainee, apprentice in the union hall at that point in time. So it is about giving our young people opportunity, and then we work with our universities, WBU, our, you know, and Marshall, our two big flagship universities, but also our community and tech colleges, our high school CTE folks. You know, I worked up a program that our young people in middle school and high school could get a FAA drone licensure and have that license by age sixteen, and potentially put that into use for themselves, doing wedding videos or real estate or whatever. If we have that, it comes along with so many other things. It comes along with, you know, computers, two D and three D CAD, it comes along with engineering, it comes along with a pilot's license. We can actually work that through the school systems, and believe it or not, we, there's so many West Virginia departments, Department of Forestry, Department of Ed, the law enforcement side, the fire marshal side, who could apprentice these young people and bring them into those kind of things? Wouldn't it be nice for our next set of fire marshals and investigators, you know, to have someone coming in on the summer that has a trade that they can work straight into a job when they graduate high school, if college is not their gig? a job when they graduate high school, if college is not their gig? So in the big scheme of things, we as West Virginia need to make sure that, you know, we are building a workforce, that we make ourselves a beacon. Every legislator needs to be that advocate that says, hey, you know, we're West Virginia. Bring that business here. Lord Corporation, they make engine mounts and different things for aviation. I spoke to one of the board members, and I'm like, hey, I'm begging you, there's an opening, there's a building in North Lewisburg that's going to be empty in about eight months. I'm like, could you please bring it here? But guess what? There are things, the legislature doesn't do everything. Vince knows that. I mean, you know, you, you take up a lot of, what, you have 2,000-plus bills in the last session?
Yes, sir.
Do we need 2,000 bills in a session? Is all of it worthwhile? You know, but what I will say is that those legislators can work above and below where they are. They can work with the county commissions. They can work with the local constituents. They can work with the governor's office. They can work with economic development, and they can work with people, you know, well beyond the borders of West Virginia as a collaborative effort. It's time to say enough is enough. We have a quality of life here that is beyond comparing. God forbid, I don't want to sound like the governor. We do. We have some things here that are absolutely amazing. My next-door neighbor, Pat, walked away about a year ago. He put a 13,500 KW generator on his back porch during the derecho in 2012. And then he left and went to stay with his son and his uncle and family, and then his health declined, and he never did come back. Guess where that generator was only a few months ago? Still sitting on the back porch. Where else in the world does that happen? It doesn't. So we have the outdoors. Economic development also has a tourism component. And I was really shocked several years ago to hear somebody in the tourism business tell me that a tourism dollar really wasn't a do, you know, wasn't part of economic development. I'm sorry. Somebody forgot to tell everybody in Florida, in Orlando, somewhere around the Big Mickey, a tourism dollar is an economy, but we need other things too. Let's look at bringing, is it a government job? How many military bases do we have in West Virginia that aren't West Virginia Guard? You know, we, we don't have a lot. We don't have that government part of an economy like Florida does. But would some strategic jobs from a government agency here, like we see in Clarksville, are those good? Robert Berg brought a lot of those things, but look what kind of economic development that's brought to the northern region. You know, it has done great things, and there have been so many great things, and there will be more great things. I'm super pleased. I mean, look at Brian. Look at what Brian brings to the table. We have a slate of candidates that are really impressive, and I think that as some of the candidates move on and set their sights on newer spots, there's going to be a great backfill for the openings that we have over there, you know, in the executive branch right now, because those folks are all looking at something else. Boogie's in the room tonight. Boogie's been up there. He's done this thing before. Vince is there now. There is good work going on. If you feel that I can be your candidate, great, but I hate the word candidate, and I hate asking for your vote. I'm asking you all to allow me to serve you and support this community. And, you know, Wendy and I, we, we still have a 30-year-old Volvo. It's the only new car ever that we bought, and we're still driving it because we love it. I like things that work and that they work well. And when things go really sideways and you roll it over the hill, the old Volvo really works hard. It's, it's at its best when you're at your worst, and I think that, you know, I can be that person. I've been there when things go really bad sideways, and you need somebody standing in the gap. That's not necessarily what the legislature does on a daily basis, but I, I, again, I've been a military officer, but before that, for eight years, I was an enlisted flight engineer and mechanic. And then in the last 12 years, I was an aviation engineer and a test pilot and search and rescue pilot and an instructor, and then moved on to other things in the civilian sector. I've been to, I think, all 50 states and 19 or 20 different countries. I've seen what the economies in Utah look like. I've seen what Silicon Valley looks like. I've seen what the economies of Virginia and New Hampshire and Georgia and Florida, and what other people are doing well and what they're doing wrong. And I think we can learn some of those lessons and bring those here. So I forgot to tell you to run a clock on me, because anybody who knows me knows you need to run a clock on me. Be quiet now, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. While we wind down, let me go through a couple of items on your agenda. One thing I did miss on the old business to talk about, when I went through all the absences, you'll notice Marie Lewis is not with us. Marie has also got some health issues in her family that she's dealing with, and so she has resigned from the secretary's position. She's still going to maintain her support of the club and, and membership in the club and come out and support candidates, but she's just not able to be out here on a monthly basis. So that said, we do have a vacancy that is open for appointment. If somebody would like to step up and be the secretary for next year, we'd love to entertain those conversations. So please reach out and let me know if you have an interest in being, being our secretary for 2024. That said, it is save the date time, so December 9th will be our dinner at the Dutch House. Hopefully you'll have it on your calendar. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, a few minutes before we get to that, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring to the club's attention.
Okay, let me go through my list, and I will come back to you on that if you want.
A few months ago, I received a letter.
What?
It was in regard to the Republican Club vis-à-vis, or even versus, the Executive Committee, Republican Executive Committee. This was a, well, what I put, it was a nasty letter, and it was unsigned. I am very sure that they used their access, whoever it was, their access to the Greenbrier County Republican Club mailing us. That's not right. It was unsigned.
I, I have not seen the letter, so I'm not familiar with the content. I would say that I haven't seen the letter, but I, I would say we do have executive committee members who are members of the club and vice versa. And so those, that distribution list is, you know, if you're a club member, you have, you can access that distribution list. So I can't speak to who's sending stuff out. I have not seen any letter that was sent out, so.
In that same regard, might as well go ahead and get it off the chest.
Okay.
Your email about the charitable food drive.
Mm-hmm.
With all due respect, the charity I do, I do it on my own.
Right.
I do through my church.
Okay.
The social, socializing, you know, if I promise to be social, I'll join the Elks, the Moose, go to dances or whatever I want to do. But the Greenbrier County Republican Club, in my mind, is not particularly, when it says on the back of this bipartisan holiday food drive update. Why do we need to be bipartisan? We, after 80 years, are finally in the majority. Why do we need to be bipartisan with the other party that has never, ever respected us to any extent?
Well, I, I think it's a, an excellent point, and I would tell you, before we joined that venture, last month, when you were not here, we brought that up to this group to say, we have an opportunity to be bipartisan and support a common need in the county. And we had 100% support from this body. I, I would just say categorically, the, the club, at least in my time here, we have, we have tried to rise above kind of the noise, and we try to do things the right way, and we try to behave in the right way, and we don't accuse people of anything, nor do we attack people or do any of those things. I've been the president for a year. Steve?
You know, just, I, I got a letter from a West Virginia Republican, and my name was on the distribution list at the time. I'm going to say what other folks have said privately and maybe not publicly. You know, this is, this is not a time to be bickering. If there are disagreements and there are rifts, I get it. We're all, it's part of the human condition, we have them. But there is one common cause here, and that is to support a conservative Republican agenda.
Yes.
And sometimes we just all need to step up to the plate.
That is true.
And, and take a deep breath and look at the purpose of all of these organizations, which is to push for something that's not crazy, left-handed, sideways from out of town. But nobody wants to see us rip each other apart. And just because you get in power and that things are going our way doesn't mean that we can't rip ourselves apart.
Thank you. I agree. I would tell you, we have tried very hard to keep the club above the noise, and, and we are not, we don't allow it in the meeting when it does, and it has come up. I assure you, it has come up, and I've tried to shut it down as quickly as I can. And we will not allow it. There's no room for it. It's not appropriate. If individual members of, of any group have issues with each other, then they can solve that on their own time. We are not going to entertain that in this form, and we haven't. And we won't. So I appreciate your comments and yours as well. So, back to Christmas.
The paper says the 8th, December 8th, your agenda. So is it the 8th or the 9th?
I have.
It's supposed to be the 8th.
It's the 8th. I'm sorry, my calendar's wrong. I, I put that together before. It's the, it's Friday the 8th. I'm sorry. I apologize. I was looking at my calendar, which I wrote that out before we changed the date. We couldn't get Saturday. It was booked. So we are Friday the 8th, which is a little different than we normally do, and that's, that's why I had it on the wrong date. So it is the 8th, which is Friday. It, this, the dinner will look a lot like the spring dinner in terms of timing and those kinds of things. So plan for a $50 ticket. Plan for a $45 ticket if you're a club member, so we're showing the value for being a club member. We are also going to do our member-exclusive mixer around 5:15 on that, that Friday. So we will invite candidates and some elected officials and folks that are, that you would like to spend some time with back to that, to that forum at the Dutch House. Dinner will be served at 6:00. And it's my pleasure to announce that we do have Elgin McCardle will be our guest speaker. Very excited to have her come down. Elgin, if you don't know, is our state party GOP head. She's, we're going to ask her to talk to you all about the election for next year. And I think that's important, that you all get that foundational understanding from her on where she sees the landscape and how she sees the races and, and the challenges that are in front of us as a party in the state. And I think her talk is going to be very, very interesting. So I would ask you all to, to make some time for that. So again, the 8th, Friday the 8th, we'll have dinner at 6:00. We'll have a mixer at 5:15. It looked very similar to what we did in the spring, but Elgin's going to be a, a nice addition to the, to the group, and we look forward to having you all out there. Next week, starting Monday, we're going to get very excited about the dinner and start getting more information out to you and talk to you about how to get tickets and all that kind of thing. Tickets will be your check, as it has in years past. It won't be that different. So be close to your notes and your email on that, and we will get a little more information to you on the dinner. That said, we are also at the time of year where we talk about dues. I did get some, some dues tonight from folks, and I appreciate that. We are keeping the dues the same as they have been, so it's $20 for an individual, it's $30 for a family. Again, Ally's not here this evening, but if you want to, if you want to give that to me, I'd be more than happy to do that. I, I would tell this group, and, and Thomas and I've talked about it, we've put a lot of effort into our social media programs and our website and those kinds of things this year. A year ago, we didn't have any of that. Now we do. So with that, we're going to try to enable more and more ability for us to, to do things online, buy tickets online, pay for things online, do things what everybody else does that we've not been able to do. So with Thomas's help, we've been able to, to merge that. So we're going to begin to move to that here shortly, where we can take dues and, and various donations and things online, and that's, that's going to be good for us to do. And that will probably begin to take us to a position where we're not going through this dues cycle we go through every fall, where we have, you know, kind of make a big effort out of it for a couple of months. We'd like to do a, a year-round membership, basically. So if you're interested, join the club, join the club online, and then you're a member. And we think that would be a, a good way to keep membership moving forward. So I don't know, Thomas, have you had any comments on it, or?
Uh, yeah. The problem right now with membership dues is everybody pays at the end of the year, right? And the problem is like, let's say that you're thinking about joining the club, and you've never been part of the club before, and you're thinking about maybe August or September, right? Well, if you do your dues, you're already going to be a club member for three months, and you have to pay your dues again. So it kind of basically makes people like not want to join the club, you know, because it's so late in the year. So by going to like possibly an annual subscription, where, you know, whenever you sign up for the club, you're a member for 12 months, and then it recurs, you know, that's something that worth talking about and consider doing. And one of the key reasons for that is when you look at like online billing systems, like, you know, PayPal, for example, it, you can set it up so that when someone signs up and does their dues, for example, $20 per year, it automatically recurs 12 months later. With the dues all being done like in the fall, which is kind of how the club does it now, that's not really possible to do that. So the problem that the club is dealing with, which I think Gordon could probably explain a little better, is that when dues come due at the end of the year, what happens is people sometimes are going into like February or March, and they still have not actually paid their dues. So trying to get it some kind of automated system in place would probably be beneficial long-term.
The, the only I would mention on the dues, in terms of timing, and we, and we got into this last year a little bit, you all will remember, I would think around this time. When it gets on the election cycle for officers of the club, we do need, you know, members in good faith, good standing to be voting members, so they have to pay their dues. And so we don't want to get in a position we frankly got into last year, where people were paying their dues the moment they walked into the, the meeting to, to vote. And we want to try and get ahead of that kind of thing. So a, a year-round cycle is easier for everybody, we think, and, you know, be a little more palatable for us and, and help us out. So we'll, we'll talk more about that. But this year, as we finish up, you know, if you've, if you're interested in renewing your membership, we'd love to have you join and, and be part of the, part of the team going into 2024. That way, it's a good segue into the, the last topic for new business that I have, and that is, we talked several months ago with the bylaws revision about a, a person to head up and focus on our membership, because we think there's an opportunity there to really think about our, our membership of the club and, and pursue that with a little more focus than, than a lot of us had. So with that said, I have nominated Thomas Perkins to assume that role, and he is going to contemplate that. And we're going to come back probably in the January meeting and go down as a body. So if you have any discussion or thoughts, feel free to talk to Thomas about it, but we'll come back in January after we've socialized that with you all and the broader group and, and see if we can do that. We'd like to have that role filled going into 2024, because we think that's important as we go through the election cycle. That said, items for the good of the club, I am going to circle back on the food drive for just a second. So behind me, over my left shoulder, is today's food drive thing that came in. We, we are working with the Democratic Women. We talked about that last month. I did, I did my duty out in Rupert yesterday. It was pretty quiet out there, but we had some good turnout here today, it appears. That's going to run for a couple, three weeks. I would thank you all, if you signed up, to support that and volunteer for that, because I think that's a good effort for the community, just to recast what that's going to look like, whatever this mountain is going to turn into in three weeks. We're going to divide that 10 ways, and we're going to have every food bank in the county receive a, a box from us out there. We were in the papers. We've got some positive press for that, I would think. And so there's been a social media presence on as well. It seems like a good thing. A lot of, a lot of support for it out there, a lot of, a lot of interest in it. So again, if you're, we do have, most of the slots are full. In fact, I think all of them are full in terms of volunteers. But if you're interested in supporting the drive, we are receiving donations, two to four, Monday and Wednesday in Rupert at the Marble Center, and Tuesday and Thursday here, right here in this building, on that stage from two to four, Tuesdays and Thursdays. So feel free to drop something by if you are interested in donating. And it's the right thing to do as we go in the holiday season, we think. So be thinking about that. The last item I had, I wrote up for Items for the Good before we move on, and if you have not taken the time to listen to our new Speaker of the House, Mike Johnson, you are missing an opportunity. That young man, who's 51, is a really charismatic, polished guy, and I think he's going to do a fantastic job. And I would encourage everybody, as you start to begin to think about next year and the, and the races that are coming up, to hear his message and how he's contemplating his agenda going into the rest of the session. And I think you're going to find him to be a pretty darn solid guy. And he's, he's been on Hannity a couple of times. He's done several Fox interviews, so, you know, so far, I, I think you, you'd be pleased with, with what you're hearing coming out of his office. That said, any, I'll open it up to the floor, any other items that we need to discuss as a club?
The Christmas dinner, the planning and stuff for.
We're going to get to that in just a few minutes. So dates to remember, again, we talked about the dinner on the 8th, so just remind everybody for that, the Dutch House, we do have that booked. Barbara's working on the menu, as we talked today. Thinking about next year, because we're not going to have a meeting in December. Thinking about next year, because we're not going to have a meeting in December, we'll go right to the dinner, we normally do that. So with 2024, if there are things you would like to do as a club, things you're interested in adding to the calendar, creating on the calendar, changing, you know, I'd be interested in getting that feedback because we're going to build that in the next couple of months, what the, what the calendar looks like. As you all know, it's the primary season in May and then the general election in November. So it should be a fairly busy year for the, for the party going into next year. To Thomas's eloquent point, volunteer opportunities, we do have the Christmas dinner upon us. The, frankly, the same group that does it every year is back working on it again. The comment I was given this morning was, we sure would like to see some new faces supporting the dinner program. So if you're interested in, you know, helping out with the Dutch House, and there's really not a whole lot of heavy lifting to do, there's just some coordination and those kinds of things. We'd love to have some people join that committee to at least experience the dinner because of how that's put together. Because frankly, as the folks in that committee are, you know, wanting to step aside to some other things at some point. So it'd be nice to have some new people as well as that. The other opportunity I'm going to present to you this evening is the Audit Committee. It's not something we've talked about a lot. We traditionally have had Joe Taylor do be our Audit Committee. What that role, that committee does is they sit down with the treasurer, they go through all the books and make sure all the filings are correct, the entries are correct, and they make sure everything is, is proper as we close out the year. Again, Joe Taylor has normally done that. Joe is a member and good standing of the club, but he's got a full-time job right now and so he's not available to do those kinds of things. So if you're interested in, you know, looking over Ally's shoulder in a couple of months and kind of making sure everything's in good shape, you know, please let me know, we'd love to have somebody that can take that role on. You know, when I was a treasurer, Joe did my book. It takes thirty minutes of your time to go through everything and if you're satisfied, you can put a letter out on that. All right. I think with that, any other business for the club? Yes, sir?
We're good of the, all of us of the, keep in mind that January is the filing period official filing period where you file for any office. Anything else is pre, that just tells them that you're interested in running. Your actual filing period will be three weeks in January and that's for all offices statewide, also for county. Isn't that correct, Pat?
Yes.
So anyone who's running, you know, wanting to run for county commission, the House, the Senate, which we do have, you know, our other senator is up. But be mindful of where you file for. And make sure that you are eligible to be filing. So, and you know, always, and please, keep in mind that all these offices are important. We talk about education a whole lot. County Boards of Education have so much power. And if they exercise it right, we might not be having ACT students who are having worse grades, scores in thirty years. So again, all these things are kind of important. So please, you know, keep in mind, if you're planning on running for office, remember the filing periods and bring your money and the Secretary of State or the County Clerk will certainly take your money.
Thank you, Boogie, I appreciate that. And again, I would just echo that those local races are important. We spend an awful lot of time on delegate and above here in this group and we don't, we don't give as much attention to those local races. Board of Education, very, very critical to this county and how we take care of our kids. So be thinking about that opportunity. With that, I think I would just close by saying Happy Veterans Day to those of us who serve. Please remember your veterans next Saturday on Veterans Day. There are a number of other things going on in town, so do that. And we will not get together before the dinner again, so I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving with you and your family. So please take time to enjoy, enjoy some time with your families while we're gone. With that, I will ask our chaplain to lead us in God bless America. Scandally.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with hope. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home.
Again, thank you all for coming and we have a good evening and travel safe.